You guys ready? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this regularly scheduled meeting. We got moved from a Tuesday to a Wednesday. It is May 7th. It's 7:30 PM, and I will call this meeting to order. We're going to stand, start with standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we're going to remain standing for a moment as words of inspiration are brought to us this evening from our Councilmember Anderson.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Anderson?
Dear God, we thank you for this day, for this community that we live in. We ask that you bless this assembly, give us a spirit of unity and direction. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please, Michelle?
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilor Binkowski. Mayor Milan?
Here.
Mayor Protan Moffett?
President.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Here.
You're all accounted for this evening, but some would like to make a motion to approve our agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda for today, Wednesday, May 7th, 2025.
Subor.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Thank you. We've approved our agenda. We'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is public comment for items on the agenda. This evening, for public comment, we are going to welcome you to approach the microphone. We'd appreciate it if you could give your name and your address, and you will have three minutes to speak. The council and administration will not engage you directly during your comments. Please feel free to approach staff or council after the meeting.
My name is Darlene McDaniel. I live on Elmwood. I'm a little concerned about the increase in the water, mainly the sewage. I have several bills from cities around here, Berkeley, Birmingham, Troy, Royloke. No one pays a sewage rate like Claussen. Birmingham is one and a half times their water rate. Madison Heights, I call the city, one and a half times. Troy is about 68% of their water amount. Berkeley is 50%, so if your bill's $100 in water, their sewage is 50. If you live in Claussen and it's 100, it's almost 250. Last year, I put sod in. My water bill was, the water amount was $282. The sewage was 680. That water didn't go in the sewer, and I inquired a couple of years ago about getting this extra meter, which other cities have, and they told me that it wasn't available in Claussen, which is hard for me to believe, and I've been told that's not true. So, an increase in the sewage, I think, is horrible. I think maybe our money needs to be managed a little better. I mean, we just wasted $25,000 on a special election, and I am livid about this.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak on items on our agenda this evening?
Hi, Jamie Gilz-Takanochi. I just had a question or a suggestion. I know the notification for this meeting was posted, as it legally has to be, in the newspaper. I've discovered that you have to have a subscription to that newspaper. I don't know if the city put it out other places. I couldn't find anything about it on the website. It wasn't on the calendar. So, maybe, just in the future, maybe we think about posting it on the website, or sending it out in text, or doing something beyond what the law requires, so that the citizens know that it's happening.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, not seeing anyone else come forward. We will move on from our public comments for items on the agenda to proclamations and presentations. On this evening, we have two proclamations and two proclamations. The first is a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month, recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month throughout May 2025. Whereas mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being, it affects how we think, feel, and act. It also affects how we handle stress, relate to others, and make choices. And whereas mental health is important for our individual well-being and vitality, as well as that of our families, communities, and businesses. And whereas nearly 1 in 5 American adults will have a diagnosable mental health condition in any given year, and more than 42.5 million U.S. adults live with anxiety disorder. The most common mental health condition in America, and whereas May 1st through May 31st, 2025, is recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month, Mental Health America 2025 theme is Turn Awareness Into Action, which celebrates the progress we've made in recognizing the importance of mental health and provides challenges to turn understanding into meaningful steps towards change. And whereas Oakland Community Health Network, with the support of the City of Claussen, joins national partners in promoting this year's Turn Awareness Into Action campaign. And whereas mental health management ensures that individuals can focus on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society while promoting diversity, inclusion, and acceptance. And whereas improved systems of care in vulnerable populations, access to non-emergent and crisis services, advanced integrated physical and behavioral health care, along with provider relations, help to fortify services coordinated by OCHN. And whereas, with the support of the City of Claussen, OCHN and its service provider agencies are committed to inspiring hope, empowering people, and strengthening communities. Now therefore, be it be resolved that Oakland County Community Health Network, with the support of the City of Claussen, hereby recognizes May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month, and calls upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, faith-based organizations, and schools to recommit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, reducing stigma, and ensuring access to appropriate and inclusive mental health services for all in pursuit of recovery and improved quality of life. Do we have anyone here this evening for this proclamation? Okay. Thank you. Our next proclamation is something that's kind of near and dear to all of our heart because it celebrates Professional Municipal Clerks Month. And as you know, we have the best professional municipal clerk in the business here with Michelle, who's had a tough week and is probably looking forward to a break tomorrow. But whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public services, and whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens of the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal services to all. Whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as an information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now, therefore, I, Paula Milan, Mayor of the City of Claussen, do recognize the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Michelle Kukue, and to all Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities that they represent. Michelle, I told you that it was Municipal Clerks Month, and I, this says one week, but I think we should give you a month because you work really, really hard. And we appreciate not just you, but also our Deputy Clerk, Vince, who I know assists you well, and is, I spoke with several people recently who came to City Hall for, you know, election things, and were like, he's so helpful. He was great. So, if they didn't get you, they got him, and we really appreciate all that you do for us.
Thank you.
Next up, we have consideration of approving the following consent agenda. We have minutes of the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, April 15th, 2025, as presented. Minutes of the budget workshop held on Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, and a list of bills in the amount of $4,235,794.01. Thank you.
Subor.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilor Binkowski?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. We've approved our consent agenda. We'll look to our next item, which is new business. First item we have is a public hearing, solicitation of public comments on the following items for fiscal year July 1st, 2025, June 30th, 2026. Item 1 is proposed general operating millage rate of 8.8519. Item 2, additional voted general operating millage rate of 3.5788. Item 3, proposed refuse collection and disposal millage rate of 1.7697. Item 4, proposed additional voted refuse collection and disposal millage rate of .6975. Item 5, Claussen Downtown Development Authority Millage Rate for real and personal property of 1.8402. Item 6 is a Blair Memorial Library Millage of .8145. Item 7 is an additional voted Blair Memorial Library Millage Rate of .2738. Item 8 is PA 369 promotional millage rate, maximum allowed levy of .0930. Item number 9 is combined debt retirement millage of 6.9000. Item 10 is combined city budgets. Item 11 is a five-year capital improvement plan.
Madam Mayor, please open the public hearing. Do allow public time to make comments on the above items.
Subor.
Thank you. We're good?
We're good.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing for the aforementioned items. If you'd like to speak on any of those items, we welcome you to the podium. We will again request that you give your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes. Not seeing anyone come forward. I will close. Or I will wait.
So, I just had a few questions.
State your name and address.
My name's Jamie Gilz-Takanochi. Just a few questions. I want to know what the homestead rate will be for taxes for summer and winter, once every, all of these costs are put in. Like, so, is the homestead rate changing from the 4.801, and the winter term of 2.0904? So, what is the rate increase or decrease on our taxes? And can you give an example of how much that would affect somebody? Wanted to know if we have any measurable goals that we're backing this into? Are we backing the budget into any strategic goals? Do we, when we put this together? And is there any chance of us increasing revenues in any department? You know, like the police department, or recs? I don't know. And I was just looking for it, and I couldn't find how much of our police budget goes to Troy for the dispatch because we spend so much on our police department? Just curious about that?
Is there anyone else? Okay, thank you. We'll close this public hearing.
I'm sorry. In the public hearing, were we not allowed to ask questions and get answers?
You were allowed to ask questions.
But no answers in a public hearing? What's the point of a public hearing? If you email, I'll answer every one of your.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
I was just going to say that. Yeah, thank you. Point of order.
Point of, point of order.
Mr. Um. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, thank you. Then we will close public hearing. Next up, we have item number 9B. Item 9B. Pardon me. Point of order. Item 9B is consideration of approving the general operating millage, additional voted operating millage, refuse collection and disposal millage, additional voted refuse collection and disposal millage, downtown development authority millage, Blair Memorial Library Millage, additional voted Blair Memorial Library Millage, PA 359 promotional millage, combined debt retirement millage, combined city budgets, and five-year capital improvement plan.
Subor. Subor.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Per Section 6.08 Annual Appropriations Resolution Tax Levy Limitation of the City Charter, and I quote, "In May of each year, the city council shall pass an annual appropriation resolution, which shall be based on the budget submitted by the city manager as approved or amended by the city council. This year, the administration and council continued to approach the budgeting season in a proactive, collaborative, and inclusive manner. Discussions around goals and objectives began internally with staff at the turn of the new year and with council at the February 18th and March 4th meetings, which led to their approval at the March 18th city council meeting. Additionally, and equally significant was the hosting of a budget discussion on March 25th between city administration department heads and the city council. On the April 1st, 2025 city council agenda, there was a discussion on the financial impacts from the 2025-2026 budget discussion held between the administration and council. Additionally, I briefed how the utilization of the former ARPA funds fenced within the general fund would be used within the FY 25-26 budget. The city council received and filed the budget at its April 15th regular city council meeting and hosted a budget workshop on April 22nd, 2025. Inquiries from that workshop were provided in an email from me dated May 1st, 2025. The proposed millage rates, FY 25-26 combined city budgets, and the five-year capital improvement plan are attached for your consideration. And if you would indulge me, Mayor, I could go over the executive summary. So, the bottom line upfront, we have planned for the use of $304,140 of fund balance, and we'll have a general fund balance reserve of approximately 24.7% at the end of this fiscal year. All other funds will end the year with healthy fund balances. Water and sewer rate increases are pass-through cost increases only. These forecasted outcomes are very similar to last year's efforts in budget. Everything we discussed with department heads and our community partners is incorporated into this budget, specifically the addition of the school resource officer, the addition of the full-time code enforcement officer, succession funding for the finance director in city clerk positions, internal financing solutions for capital equipment needed by the DPW, along with security and configuration enhancements to City Hall. The reminder of funds fenced within the general fund formerly known as ARPA funds will be expended on the following: SCBA system for the fire department, collaborative community partnership investment in electronic message board, collaborative community partnership investment in new holiday decor for the downtown, city park enhancements to include but not limited to security cameras, skate park repairs, upgrades, and hot lot renovation. Our economic outlook is positive with the forthcoming developments at 150 North Main, the multifamily dwelling unit development at 440 West 14 Mile, and the former school sites of Shom and soon-to-be Baker. Those two former sites, those two former school sites are projecting a total of 53 single-family homes. Two homes located elsewhere in the city are currently under construction, with an anticipated two more in the coming fiscal year, along with several commercial developments still under consideration. The successful passage of the Infrastructure Improvement Bond in the November 2024 election will generate $64.5 million. The first of four issues of bond series for $24.5 million closed May 1st. This will facilitate the reconstruction of Elmwood and the replacement of the water main along Maple during this coming fiscal year.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
I have a question, and just if, I don't know if Mr. Pollack can answer it, or if Mr. Riker can answer it, but to help understand, the millage rates listed in 9A, are those all the same as they've always been, with the exception of, from the bond that passed for the roads? Like, are any of these numbers different than they were before? And I could have researched, but got busy with work, so couldn't.
Every year, the city's subject to Proposal A limits and headly rollback. These rates, other than the debt, because we have to levy what we need to, to pay it back, all these rates were rolled back by .9826, which was our headly millage reduction fraction. So, they're all about 98.26% lower than they were last year.
Okay. So, should, so, should that result in, to answer the citizen's question, should that result in similar tax rates, with the exception, I know that there's the, the road improvement thing is going to be a slight increase, but should that put them pretty much where they were before, or how does that net out?
The debts, the two mills that we proposed when we put the bond on the ballot. So, it'll be two mills higher for debt, and then the rollback in rates, you still end up with a slight increase because your property taxable value increases. So, but, I mean, they'll be close. I think generally, the assessment notice each year gives you an idea of what your taxes will increase. If you have an increase, it's generally highlighted on there. Everyone in the city that owns property gets that notice. The two-mill levy, we tried to estimate during the proposal, but, I mean, I can certainly put something together as an example, and we can post it on the website, so people have an idea.
Okay. And then, to also answer the question, and we hear it all the time, and I know that the water rates are just pass-through, but is there, like, some philosophical reason why? Is it because Claussen's so small that we always end up so much higher than everyone else, or would they, how does that, do you know how that happens?
Well, we, we levy our rates based on what it costs us to run our system. So, our sewer system, we do get the question a lot about separate meters. We can't do that because we can't bill you for water only. Every drop of water the City of Claussen purchases, we pay sewer on that water. So, we pay it based on consumption. That's how we bill it. We can't get around that. We can't, we can't get a purchase of water without paying sewer. That's how we're billed, so that's how we pass the cost through.
Can I expand on that? Why can others, why can other communities then?
What other communities? I hear that a lot.
Bluefield Township.
Bluefield Township must not have a system that we have, because we have to pay sewer based on water. If Bluefield Township has their own system, they may not pay sewer based on water consumption. We do. Everybody in Saquon, in most of this area, pay, unless they have their own system, pay sewer based on water consumption.
When you say system, you mean like water treatment system or something? What do you mean?
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're through the Water Resource Commissioner, which runs through Oakland County. We're under the George W. Coon Drainage System, and each year, they give us, they fix the cost, which did help us from getting, you know, double-digit increases on an annual basis. But they fix the cost, and this year, it was a 6.9% increase. They do the same thing. They, they, they have a budget they put together to operate the system, to treat the sewage. It's unfortunate for everybody in the system, sewage treatment costs more than sanitary treatment, but they measure that, and then each year, they assess us a rate. But the unfortunate part is, because we don't have our own separate system, we pay sewer based on water that we purchase, so that's how we bill it. It sucks, but that's just how it is.
No, I appreciate the explanation.
I have a question. One of our citizens was citing a different ratio between water and sewer. Does that, where does that end up?
It depends. Each one of these cities, again, has their own water and sewer operation costs to run their system. I was in Berkeley. I don't recall the sewer being significantly lower, but maybe it is. I don't know. I, I just know when we were there, we put a rate together based on what our system cost us to operate.
So, some of the other communities could be outside of the 12 towns George Coon Drain System?
Yes.
Right? Because they're possibly on the Rouge River Drainage Basin or someplace else.
And I think Troy has some separate sewer as well. Troy has the ability to, their sanitary and their, their storm sewer is separated. It's treated differently. It's just, again, it's unfortunate that we have the system we have because we have to pay sewer based on water consumption. But again, it's not, probably 30 years ago, it was a dart at a dartboard, so to speak, but they did huge studies, and they said, you have to pay your system based on your water consumption. And that's what we have to do. It's, I said, it's not fun. I know our rates tend to be higher, but we tend to do pass-through costs, and if, if you look, our water and sewer fund will lose $200,000 this year, even with these rate increases. So.
So, is it safe to say the city's not making money distributing water?
No, no. We're, I mean, the good thing, again, with, with infrastructure bond proposal, when we fix the sewers, the ones that need fixing, coming from that fund, our operating costs should drop over the years, so that we could get a year where we either freeze costs or, you know, hallelujah, drop costs. But it, I've been with the city for 20 years. We've never, other than a rate freeze a couple of times, we've had to raise rates every year because it costs us money to run the system.
So, just reading from the explanation of what they did to the drain at, was it 12 Mile and, and between 75 and John R.? I mean, it's extensive as far as how much they, they added for capacity for sewer and wastewater.
Yes. 250 million gallons. They're trying to add capacity, so we don't have a repeat of 2014. That's the main concern. Nobody wants sewage in their basement, and they're doing everything they can to add capacity to the system. That's large capacity for storm water. It eventually runs through the system, and then it, they have to treat it, but for events like that, they have a tendency to hyperchlorinate and try and get the water through the system so it doesn't end up in basements. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Pollack. Roll call, please, Michelle?
I don't think there's been a motion, has there?
Yes, there was.
Yep.
Was there? Okay. This is the motion to approve the general and the, okay. Well, I've got some more questions, and, well, I'd like to make a motion to amend the library expenditures from 698,860 to an even $800,000.
Support. So, assuming there's discussion?
Sure. I mean, I'd like to see the library open six days. I've been told it'll cost, you know, even though I've never actually had the rationale delivered to me as requested, I'd like to get us open to six days, and I'd like to make it easy for the library board to make that decision. If they've got $100,000 of budgeted city funds for it, then they can decide whether or not they want to open six days.
Madam Mayor, the library board will be meeting, I believe it is, next week, and this is an item of discussion on their agenda. Should it be their inclination to support moving in that direction, it wouldn't be a problem for city council to amend their budget.
Or we could just amend it right now? Well, I guess I'd like to hear what they have to say. So, if they say they don't need it, I guess I don't want to necessarily jump the gun on it. And certainly, we can go back and amendment if that's something that they would like. But what's their rationale for saying they don't need it? I mean, I did a Facebook poll. Two-thirds of the people said they wanted the library open six days. One-third said they didn't. I mean, it's kind of similar to the result in yesterday's election. So, I would like to see as far as if they have some rationale on what it is, right? They may have foot traffic. They may have some other previous studies that they had, right? I'd like to hear first from them. They're the ones that operate the building. They're the ones who would be making that, that recommendation and request. I don't have a problem going back and saying, yeah, here, if this is something that you need, I'll be glad to amend them, but not at this point. I'd like to hear what they say. I guess, you know, I'd like to be frugal about this, rather than just throwing money at something and hope that they'll make the decision that we would like. I'd like to have them, the experts on this, make the decision, and then we can go back and revisit it.
I would agree.
So, who do you think the experts are on, on library days open? The five members of the library board? The library administrator? The five library, library board members?
I would hope so. I'd take their expertise over the polling group you referred to, or your own personal experience. I am first, I am personally in favor of expanding the library hours, but let's do it thoughtfully instead of just throwing some money out there and seeing what happens.
If you're, if you're in favor, I, I hope you vote for it, then.
Well, not in this, not under these conditions. I would say we can amend the budget later, just not tonight.
Yes, and I understand that'll be never, so.
Not necessarily.
I think, I think perhaps the rationale, I was going to say, I think perhaps the rationale is to make the conditions more palatable for them to make the decision to go ahead. If the money's there, then they don't have to, like, well, can we afford it? If the money's there, then they don't have to like, well, can we afford it? That kind of thing. I think that might be your mindset behind it, which, you know, it's like opening the door, here, come on in, let's do it, as opposed to having to go through the rigamarole, rigamarole afterwards, I think is just the thought process.
I certainly haven't said no, right? As far as making sure that I want to hear what they have to say first, and if there's a need, then we can revisit at that point in time. But putting the cart before the horse, and we were trying to make sure that we're, we're being frugal with our money, being prudent with our decisions on this, that, you know, why we do this now when we can wait and we can easily amendment, amend it at some point in time if the, if the library comes back and says, yes, we feel that it's something that, that the community needs, then I'll be supportive of it, absolutely.
I think, did you bother speaking with the librarian or any of their staff to see what their goals are?
Well, I'm talking about my goals and the goals of the taxpayers of the city. The people of the city want the library open more. So that's what I want to have happen, is the library to be open six days. So that's our job as legislatures, is to define the operation of the city and then let the city manager operate.
We said no? I mean, right now, again, I've said, let's hear back from the library. It's very simple, very simple. I don't understand why that's a problem, to have back, if they say no, then we're going to be fighting uphill as far as like, no, here's the money, and they don't want it.
Well, I'll tell you why. I, I went to the last library board meeting, and they were under the impression that they would have to spend this $80,000 out of their rainy day fund. And I am trying to say to them, no, you do not need to spend the $80,000 out of your rainy day fund. You can take money out of our general fund to fund the libraries a sixth day. That's why I want this passed now.
It's a pretty compelling argument.
Mr. Raker, were they that ill-informed as to think that they had given a...
Council member, thank you, not in the least bit. We have a highly tenured director. We have highly conscientious board members, and we have a process. They've been willing to, there was a key board member that was missing, and they wanted to wait until she was available. That's the simple explanation.
Yeah, I've served on the front of the library for the past couple of years, and it's a lot of fun. And I can tell you, sitting there, you know, they're not the board, but they do assist with financing with a lot of the special projects they have. And I've learned a lot about the operations of the library. And they're extremely frugal. They're extremely conscientious of their, the people whom they serve. They, if you know, you know, they adjust their schedule a couple of times a year to accommodate different things. And they make sure that they're meeting the needs of the people. And I think, yes, if we have people clamoring for our library six days a week, something we should consider, but I don't think it's right to consider it without first getting conversation with the people who would be taking it on, and also to see what their viewpoint is, because there may not actually be a need for that, which would just be a further expenditure of dollars that might not benefit the community when we're dealing with limited dollars.
If the library board comes back and says they don't want to open six days, they want to leave it at five, then we've got $100,000 that will be redeposited in the general fund next year for our use. Just because we budget it doesn't mean they have to use it.
Mr. Raker?
Madam Mayor, we discussed this at length several times. We have a way forward to conclusion to facilitate what Councilmember Binkowski may think the administration and the school, the, the library board, the library staff can support. It'll be looked into properly and procedurally, taking into consideration the people it impacts and who has a say-so in the process.
So this is on their next board agenda? So should they come back and say, oh, sure, we'd love to be open six days a week? We are fine with just moving dollars into their account to facilitate that?
And this is a conversation I even haven't even had with the director or the finance director, the library board director or the finance director.
So you're saying that I brought it up months ago, and you still haven't had a conversation with them about it?
No, not at all saying that. In fact, you did receive a financial breakdown of the cost of it, okay? You did. You got in the Friday feedback.
I got it off, okay.
You got a Friday feedback.
All right.
Yes, you did. So, so yes, I mean, at the end of the day, the process should be respected. You have appointees, you have volunteers from the community. Yeah, people have been doing this a very long time and actually have worked hard to get the library in the condition it currently is. And I think the process should be respected. And when that, when we go forward, if that's what you want to do, and if that's what the rest of the board is in support, and the community, and the library board, then so be it. But have I had a conversation about, hey, Mark, let's take X amount of dollars out of the general fund and supplement something that we haven't even procedurally reviewed? The answer is no.
Okay. But I have brought it up several times, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call please, Michelle.
Again, we're voting on the amendment.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Wait, we're voting on the amendment?
His amendment, which would say to open the library five, six days?
To put money in the budget.
To put money, well, yeah, to put money in the budget. No.
Mayor Proton Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
No.
Councilmember Anderson?
No.
Councilmember Binkowski?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That did not pass, so now we go back to our original motion, which is...
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, got another question for the city manager. Is the police chaplain a paid position?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Should we make him paid? Would you like to make a motion for that?
What's that?
Would you like to make a motion to make him paid?
No.
Oh.
I've got another question, though.
Go ahead.
Unless, is it okay?
Yeah, I gave the nod.
Unless the council wants to call the vote at any point in time, because I can see the direction this is going.
What's, what's the, my goodness, my goodness, sir.
Yes, your goodness.
My goodness.
Your goodness.
Ah. The, um, we passed the recreation master plan, yet on the, um, the, uh, the improvement plan, the capital improvement plan, there is no talk about further things this year besides the park totlot and skate park and security cameras. Are, are we planning to make any of these other improvements to the park? And if so, why are they not on the plan?
Well, they are not on the plan because we are utilizing the remainder of the ARBA funds for any additional projects that may be, need to be addressed. I've been meeting monthly with stakeholders for the, for parks and recreation internally and also with the park and recreation board, and we're making those prioritizations. And as they come to fruition, we will bring them forward.
But we haven't done it yet, so we don't have anything in our capital improvement plan for, for recreation facilities in the next five years.
Actually, I can expound on that. At the last meeting, it was suggested that perhaps the remainder, I think it's $176,500, could be seed money for matching grants in the future. So we are giving it its due consideration.
All right. I will make one other note, then I will shut up, is that the fact that even though I had requested it, we still, in the capital improvement plan, do not have the year-by-year capital improvements for roads and sewer projects, so.
Well, actually, if, if I may, Mayor.
Yes.
If you recall, you can't, because you weren't at that meeting where we had the actual infrastructure debate and, and the presentation...
What are you talking about? I've been at every meeting this year.
This year. But last year, when we had the infrastructure meeting, and we made a point to do the cert, the, um, cammering and cleaning of the, the sewer system, that has not been finished. And once that is complete, that's why I update you every meeting, it's at 30% right now, once that is complete, we'll be able to rack and stack those things that are on the list that was shown for the bond against what priorities there may be from the findings of the closed circuit television and cleaning of the sewer system.
Any other questions? You're welcome to. We welcome your questions. Is that a yes or a no?
Madam Mayor, call the vote, please.
Okay, let's call the vote for the original motion. Mayor Proton Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
No.
Mayor Malone?
Yes. Thank you. We have just approved the general operating villages for a variety of things. And we'll move on to the next item, which is 9C. We have consideration of increasing the water consumption rate to 38.06 cents per 1,000 cubic feet and increasing the water fixed charge to 1,550 per quarter, increasing the sewer consumption rate to 95.84 per 1,000 cubic feet, and increasing the sewer fixed charge to $22.62 per quarter, maintaining the sewer debt fixed charges at $9 per equivalent meter unit per quarter effective with billing date starting on July 1st, 2025.
So move the board.
Mr. Raker?
The water and sewer rates are being increased to the, to cover the pass-through costs from Southeast Oakland County Water Authority and for water from the Water Resource Commissioner for Sewer. The recommendation for the 2025-2026 fiscal year is to increase rates to offset the pass-through charges. For the water charges, the consumption rate is increasing 2.86%. The sewer consumption charges increase is 4.67%. The Saquon rate will increase 6%, and the WRC GWK sewer rate will increase 7.1% for the storm water and, for the storm water and, and 4.4% for sanitary sewer treatment. Since our operating costs are only increasing by 2%, the overall rate increase for 1,500 cubic feet per quarter for an average two-person household is 4.2% or an average of $82.99. The sewer debt rate is staying the same at $9 per quarter. The IWC charges continue to be billed only to the sewer customers who create industrial waste as determined by GLWA. And also, that increase, your total increase for water and sewer is $3.34 per month. That's the average, using that average of 15 cubic feet per quarter for an average two-person home. That increase, total increase of 4.2% equates to $3.34 in totality per month.
Thank you for that information. Does anyone have any questions?
In essence, these are pass-through costs, and the 4.2% essentially reflects inflation, more or less.
It's actually a lot more complicated than that, but more or less.
I'm sure it is. Inflation doesn't move evenly across all sectors, so. I wish it were zero, but inflation is there.
To managing expectations, as Mr. Pollak said, this is not a reality. That's not something to talk about, really, because we're not managing the expectations of the residents. It's not a reality.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Roll call please, Michelle. Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
No.
Mayor Malone?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Moffett?
Yes.
Thank you. We've just approved the increase in our water consumption rates for the upcoming year. We will move on to item 9D, which is consideration of the proposed 2025-2026 city department fee schedules.
Madam Mayor, I move that the proposed fee schedule is adopted, and the following fees relating to various sections of the city code and activities of the city are hereby established, and the various city departments are authorized to charge and collect such fees effective July 1st, 2025.
Thank you.
Support.
Nick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The attached user fee schedule includes current fees that were adopted for FY '24-25 and the proposed fees for FY '25-26. Any changes are highlighted to clearly indicate any modification. The building department and Parks and Recreation include proposed changes that are more in line with the direct, indirect, and overhead costs associated with a specific fee. The following are the proposed changes. The temporary sign permit, which is proposed to be $55, is in line with the base fee for all building permits. For electrical sign permits, for a new sign is $35, and a reconnect is $15. This is an additional fee if businesses have more than one electrical sign per building. Simplification of the electrical vehicle charger fee, we combined two of the similar EV charger applications that had some contractors getting confused, so we simplified it, and the fee is still $70. And then finally, for Parks and Recreation, the memorial gazebo rental, the recommended fee for that is $50 per day, which is in addition to the fee schedule.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I just, I raised a question at, at some point, as far as, uh, fees for tree removal, and I think that probably has a deeper discussion at some point in time. So I would like to see that happen at, at some point. One of the things is that remarked on, on that is that I saw, it was a few months ago, there was a large tree. It was probably about a 10-foot trunk with heavy, heavy equipment and a crane lifted up over a house. And I'm thinking, we don't even charge for that. So at some point, you know, we can have the discussion, that'd be great.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, if I can put the council member on, on the spot, can you explain to the public the importance of, of the, a tree of that magnitude in the rain cycle, basically?
So essentially, if you have a tree that is, you know, for sake of an argument, it's 60-foot high and 80 feet across, right? That canopy can hold at any point in time during a rainstorm 500 gallons of water. The other thing, too, is that it helps percolate the water into the soil. The other thing, too, it helps mitigate our heat island effect, and it creates shade for the rest of the neighbors so that they don't have increased energy costs as a result. So if we like to have a law, nice lawn mowed, and we have a massive tree that's in the backyard, I would hope that people are thinking, you know, thinking again as far as taking that out, because that, at that point, it's not just a twig in the backyard, it's an asset for the community. So, and that's something that I'd like to see if we can try and address at some point.
Anyone else? Roll call please, Michelle. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
No.
Mayor Malone?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Thank you. We've just adopted our fee schedule for the upcoming year. Thank you for that, Nick. We'll move on to item number 9E. We have consideration of the special event request for the Claussen 4th of July Committee to conduct their annual events celebrating the 4th of July.
I move the special event request by the Claussen 4th of July Committee to conduct the annual events celebrating the 4th of July be approved as presented.
Support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Claussen 4th of July Committee is, again, making preparations for the annual 4th of July celebration. The attached letter serves as a form of request to review and approve the current plans for the upcoming events. The 4th of July Committee met with key city staff to discuss the event and ensure that all parties are in agreement on how to have a safe and fun event. The 4th of July Committee and the city will continue to engage in ongoing conversations to make sure all necessary services are properly communicated, coordinated, and conducted. Theme this year is Star Spangled Salute. Both Mike Paquette and Pam Weaver from the 4th of July Committee are present to discuss this year's events and answer questions if needed. It is recommended to approve the request for the 4th of July Committee as presented.
Would you like to say anything to us this evening? Want to tell us what great things you have planned?
Sure.
I knew you didn't want to, but it'll be fun.
Hopefully be a good light.
My name is Michael Paquette. Karen.
Karen Navella.
And Pam Weaver. We're here, of course, for the, probably about the 90th time, doing this 4th of July thing. Not me personally, but between...
He's 87.
I'm 87? Oh.
That's a good question.
So anyway, we do have quite a few events going on, starting, uh, Wednesday, June 25th, all the way down to, um, July the 4th, of course, when the fireworks go off. We definitely have a lot of good stuff going on, and we have the, uh, website that's been updated and improved, very easy to navigate through, and I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Pam.
Okay. So our website for all, everybody who's watching is, you'll go to www.claussen4th, with the number four, 4th of July, claussen4thofjuly.com. On there is all the information you're going to need to know all of the festivities and things that are going on. things that are going on, but we also have a sign-up genius on there for every year for gates and also participating in the parade. Just to give an example, for the gates, which is something I manage, we have to have at least 40 people a day for the gates and it's about a two to maybe two and a half hour shift depending on when the shift falls. And it's a great way to get out there for businesses, everybody to meet their constituents and to volunteer for just a short amount of time on that time. So I just recommend that anybody that can volunteer and can get onto that, please do so. And then on there is also information about my email and things too, to get on there as well. And I think that's all I've got. All right. I'm in charge of the Kitty Parade and I just want to let everybody know it's June 28th. It's going to be at 11:00 in the morning. Bring your lawn chairs, bring your children, bring your grandchildren, bring whoever you want to. We usually have about 100 kids, sometimes we have more. They work really, really hard on these floats to make them absolutely beautiful. We have bikes, we have trikes, we have wagons, we have scooters, we have little motorized cars. And last year we had two people show up with golf carts. So please come out. If you're not going to participate, bring up your lawn chair and enjoy it. We're going to go from the back of the Claussen, the side of the elementary school this year by the tennis courts and go all the way to Claussen Park. So please come and join us. We would love to see everybody there.
Thank you. It's so fun.
We definitely want to push the people coming out and watching for these little kids to, they do spend a lot of time putting these, their wagons and all their stuff together. So it would be nice to see a large group of people sitting on the side of the road watching that happen. And one good note on the parade this year, we were able to get the Claussen Marching Band, Royal Look Marching Band, and the alumni to march in the parade this year.
Nice.
So that would be a nice, good addition to the parade.
Wonderful.
Yep. Any questions, please?
No questions, but thank you for all that you do.
Thank you very much. Thanks very much for doing this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And thank you to my volunteer Darlene. She comes every year.
Hey, the roll call please, Michelle.
Councilmember Binkowski?
Yes.
Mayor Malone?
Yes.
Mayor Portemoffett?
Yes.
Councilmembers Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. We look forward to hosting the 4th of July activities and we really appreciate it to the committee that worked so hard throughout the whole year and we're happy that it will be warm hopefully by the time we do that, right? Yeah, that's right. It will be beyond warm. Thank you. Nice to see you guys. Next up, we have, under item 9F, we have consideration of proposals for downtown brick paver repairs.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the city entering into a contract with It's the Brick Guys for downtown brick paver repairs as outlined in their submitted proposal.
Support.
Mr. Riker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The DPW and DDA solicited and received five quotes for necessary brick, brick paver repairs within the downtown area. The quotes were as follows. It's the Brick Guys at $34,950, Capital Landscape at $38,320, Brickheads at $43,377, Dominico at $49,982, and We're the Guys at $70,080. The scope of work includes repairing existing paver areas utilizing surplus pavers owned by the city to fill ground-level flower beds and installing pavers where trees are scheduled for removal. After careful review, the DPW and DDA liaison jointly recommended awarding the contract to It's the Brick Guys, whose proposal of 43, pardon me, $34,950 was the lowest responsible quote received. The cost will be 50-50 split with the DDA who approved this partnership at their April 16th regular DDA board meeting. The city share will come from the Major Roads Fund. A gentleman from It's the Brick Guys is present as well.
Right. Would you like to speak to us? You're like, why?
Do you guys have any questions or?
The DDA is our Downtown Development Authority.
Um, when could we start? Trevor told me there was a date you guys wanted us to, to start by, something going on, was it the 17th or something?
That is, that, Madam Mayor, if I may, that is the date of the open-air market and also the farmer's market. Yeah, so we'd like to hopefully get it done before that.
Before that?
Yes, sir.
Today's the 7th, so that gives us 10 days. Say we started and did it finish by then, is that a problem or?
No. My understanding is that when you start repairs in an area, you complete them so there's no open areas.
Exactly. That's what I was going to say. No, there wouldn't be any of that. And he also told me that they would block off each corner that we're working, so we'd do one side at a time.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to try my best to make that happen for you guys.
Thank you. We appreciate your coming in this evening. Do you have a question?
Question for Mr. Riker. Is there a bid spec created for this job and if so, could we see that in our packets?
I think you have the, the actual map.
I have the map, but it's got to be more than a map, right?
It was based on their, they represented in their quote, I believe he wrote out the work and the material that they would do.
So all we gave you is a map?
No.
Okay. What else did we give you?
He didn't give me anything. I went there and looked at the job so I know what I'm doing.
Okay.
Nick was there too?
Staff walked through with the providers to walk through exactly what we're looking for, the locations, and identified them that way. And the map was done to specifically identify where the brick pavers need to be replaced.
Okay. Where's, was, the other question was, was this a sealed bid process or was this?
No, we got, received quotes.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Any other questions?
Just as far as the areas that are, we had some garden beds that were in the corners. Are those getting filled in?
If they're raised, no. If they are at ground level, yes.
Okay. Yeah, they were the ones that were in, into the subsurface.
Yeah, where the flat ones are, are going to become walkways.
Okay, all right. All right, and then are the trees removed that need to be removed or are they still?
There's a couple more that are coming down this week still.
Oh yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. They're, they've been pulling them out.
Yes. Stump grinding is coming in right behind.
And there are repairs we're doing too. It's not just the flower beds. There's some areas that are not, where do you stop is the question. There's a lot, you know, and there was quite a few spots that were pretty bad that we are repairing. So it's not just the flower beds.
So when you say spots, is the fact that they're damaged bricks or are they upheated because of the roots?
No, 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 no. Just, yeah, just sinking areas, some are high, some are low. Pretty much we're trying to hit the areas that are, so nobody gets hurt. That's the priority.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If I just may, just, you're, you're, thank you. I know people have been upset about having the trees removed, but you know, I'll go back and, and say that at some point in time, we had caddie repairs downtown, which should never have been planted in the first place. They can be problematic besides being invasive, that they have, the, the caddie repairs that have a difficult, they have an easy time of breaking limbs, which can lead to, you know, people being hurt or damaged property. The other thing too is that we went from one species to another species in Gladiatia or Honey Locust, and that's also problematic for the fact that it's not suited for tight locations because it has a widespread and it also has a shallow succulent root system. So unfortunately, we do not have the capability to have a successful tree, transplanting process for trees that are that size. So I know that is also a question that I've seen in the past, like, no, you can't, unfortunately can't do that with mature trees. So as long as we have, those are ground out, at some point in time, I think we could probably establish, you know, the soil has to come back and rebound from having that many trees in such a short period of time. And that goes for any trees that are removed. You need to wait at least a year, if not two to three, before you can replant a location where a large mature tree was, was planted. So I look forward to at some point in time, having more appropriate trees in their appropriate locations downtown. Thank you.
Okay, if we have nothing else, let's go for roll call, please, Michelle.
Mayor Malone?
Yes.
Mayor Portemoffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
No.
We have just approved entering into a contact with It's the Brick Guys to fix our brick paver repairs downtown and look forward to that being done for everyone. Thank you for coming this evening. Next up, we have item 9G, which is consideration of the social district permit application for Yul Kwan, Quincy the K and K, commonly known as Nori Chicken Pucha, 1 South Main Street, in accordance with the Michigan Control Commission.
So move.
Support. Thank you. Nick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yul Kwan, Quincy the K and K, commonly known as Nori Chicken Pucha, located at 1 South Main Street, has submitted an application for inclusion in the social district in compliance with the Michigan Control Commission regulations. In July of 2021, the City of Claussen established a social district in the heart of downtown to support business and promote a lively downtown. All restaurants that are located within the boundaries of the social district and have a liquor license are allowed to apply and participate in the social district. The social district runs along East 14 Mile from points west of Pear, the northwest of, north side of West 14 Mile, east of Washington, and along South Main Street from points north Tacoma. The applicant's place of business operates within the boundaries of the social district.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just, the social district goes out to Pear, is that what you said? That's the closest landmark. The, the business is Renshaw's, but we wanted to use streets to identify exactly where the boundaries are.
Okay.
Yes.
Hey, roll call please, Michelle.
Mayor Portemoffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
Yes.
Mayor Malone?
Yes. Thank you. We've just approved the social district permit for Nori Chicken Pucha. Next up, we have consideration of appointment of Athena Collins to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate to expire on December 31st, 2028.
Madam Mayor, I move the appointment of Athena Collins to the Zoning Board of Appeals alternate to expire December 31st, 2028 be approved.
Support.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments concerned surrounding this appointment? And roll call please, Michelle.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
Yes.
Mayor Malone?
Yes.
Mayor Portemoffett?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Athena, for your willingness to serve. I've spoken to her a couple times. She's really excited to get going, so she'll be a great asset. She has good energy. Thank you for that. Move on to item number 10, which is unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business this evening? Great answer. We have, next up, we have public comment for items not on the agenda. If you would like to come and speak for items on the agenda, we would again ask that you, when you approach the microphone, that you give your name and address. We will allot you three minutes to speak. The council administration will not engage you directly during your conference and please feel free to approach staff or council after the meeting.
My name's Darlene McDaniel. I live on Elmwood and Claussen. I just find it almost comical that Mr. Shepherd made a comment about being frugal. I don't find spending all that money on that election, using my tax dollars, as being very frugal. That money could have been used for a lot better purpose. We already had voted on it. You know the results.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else?
Hi again, Jamie Gilz-Takanochi. I had a question from another citizen I said I'd ask. They wanted to know how much the election cost. Maybe it's in the Clerk's report. I don't know, otherwise I'll email about it. I did want to thank the council members who got some of my questions answered during deliberation. We come here to learn things about the city and it's really frustrating when nobody wants to be transparent with the information or even let us all know that this meeting's happening. I have another comment. Mr. Riker seems to jump in a lot in the council debates. My understanding is that council, the people we voted for, are the ones that argue the issues. You're often not recognized when you jump in, which is against Roberts rules. And when the city attorney speaks and when other people speak, they give information and you are very argumentative. So I'm just not sure if that's your job at this point in time at these meetings, to be the arguer and really to talk down to some members of the council. I did want to thank all the voters that came out. We had a great turnout for May election. We normally don't get that many people. And I want to thank everybody who shows up for meetings now. I think that's amazing and I don't think that we always get thanked.
Is there anyone else?
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
My name is Teresa Jackson and I live at 465 North Washington. And my question is, so this whole meeting is, we're talking a lot about mills and increases and it was helpful to know a little bit about how that affects individual taxpayers. But my question is, is there an exercise at the same time to look at places where, in the budget, where there might be, rather than just passing all the costs on to citizens, is there places where we can save money in the existing budget? I, I don't know. It's my first in-person meeting, but I was just curious. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, hello there. My name is Maxine Stein. I live at 312 Pear Street. I've been up here before. I'm new to this, but I've made this comment before about your city manager. He's combative, combative and it's obvious. And he has, I don't know, his personality is so off-putting and maybe some of you up there don't realize that we pay you to work for us. We, the people, you're the government, you do what we say. That was obviously overlooked. And a lot of us made that really clear yesterday. That wouldn't have happened without the courage and bravery, the knowledge that was passed, the information that was passed, the wisdom that was passed, and the hard work that was looked into, not by our people, our own, our own people who are supposed to be doing good for us, but by a few really hard-working ladies over there. I can't imagine what, how it would have turned out or how many people would have voted without them. You guys were deceptive. You were underhanded. You were dishonest with the people you are sworn to take care of. All your God stuff, that's a joke and you should be ashamed of yourselves for what you did to the citizens of Claussen. You have people to take care of. All this bickering and jabbing at each other, you sound like children up there. It's embarrassing. Those of you who are taking it should be ashamed of yourself and double ashamed after what went on yesterday. Go home and look your spouses in the eye tonight and your children.
Anyone else? Anyone else for public comment?
Linda Hale, 940 West Selfridge. I just want to say, I was a yes vote. Sorry, we lost. And I don't believe that there's one person, any one person on council that is not invested in this city. Whether I believe, whether I agree with you or not, and certainly there's some people that I haven't agreed with, I believe that all of you are invested in the city. And this whole vote was simply an amendment and there was not one person here that disagreed with the amendment when it was brought forward. And I think that at the time council brought this forward, they simply thought, let's make an amendment because it didn't make sense. And that's how the amendment got brought forth. Not because it was underhanded, not because there was any person on council that wanted to do a power move, for crying out loud. Really? A power move? City of Claussen is 2.2 square miles and we are a city of, of what? Awesome people with a big heart. And it doesn't sound like everybody has had a big heart here. You know, I, I don't see a problem with any one of you. You want to speak your mind, speak your mind. That's what we're here for. Not everybody agrees with one another and if, if every single one of you agreed with one another, I would doubt that council was very effective. I don't see a problem, I don't see a problem even with Mr. Riker. You, you know what? I, I see a problem when you don't participate, when you haven't been watching. I learned my lesson the hard way. Shom. I learned it the hard way by not having been on the ground floor and I find every single one of you receptive to my emails, to my questions afterwards. And I may not agree with all of you and, but... And I may not agree with all of you, and, but every single one of you have put up with a lot of, of the city, you know, people that come forth and say things to you, probably including myself, you know, when you don't agree with something.
It's time.
So, that's it.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Okay, we'll close public comment and go to our city clerk's report. Michelle?
Thank you. The report I have tonight would be just basically an update on the election. We did have a 26% turnout for the election yesterday. We had a 52 partake in the early voting. Absentee voting was 1,456, total voting of 2,472. The unofficial results can be found on the Oakland County Elections website or on our city website. They will be unofficial until the certification's complete, which means they cannot complete the certification until after the six-day cure time period for the move ballots and for the signature cures of ballots that came in without signatures. They will have till Friday, May 9th at 5:00 to cure those signatures and count that vote. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much.
I have a question, Michelle. There was some chatter about the early voting not being required, that we could have opted out of that. Can you, can you talk about that?
The state requirement is state and federal elections, and I think I mentioned that in a, in a report previously. But we're under contract with the Oakland County to do early voting. So when we entered into that contract with early voting for this, with the Oakland County, we, they are, they are electing to have it for every election. It doesn't matter what it is.
So wasn't it, anyone made a decision? It's just part of a contract that we have with Oakland County?
It's part of that. I did, I did opt, you know, I did approach the county on not having it for this election, and I, I believe we need to, you know, keep everything, you know, keep the voters involved in every way we can. I'm totally behind that. However, the county said that the county clerk is, this is her goal and her decision with the contract to do it for every election, not to pick and choose. I have no problem reaching out to the county after we figure out the costs of it and letting them know that I think that the community should have the option to opt out for a smaller election. Fifty-two voters, I mean, I realized that some did partake in it, but there are several ways to vote, you know, getting a ballot prior to the meeting or voting on election day. And if you don't want to vote by absentee and mail it in, you're welcome to take it to your precinct and process it, just like they do at the early voting site. So I think there's other opportunities, and I think that we'll, we'll take a good look at the cost and make sure that the county knows our stand on it, you know, going forward. But I didn't have a choice.
I appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
Councilwoman Binkowski, you have your hand up? Thank you, Michelle. Let's go to our city attorney's report. Mr. Newshy?
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Riker, do you have a city manager's report for us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sewer cleaning and inspection continues, and we are currently at 30% complete with citywide televising and cleaning of our sewers. We anticipate this project to be completed in August or before. As a reminder, we have a sectional map of the city that is updated when necessary and is located on the City Clausen website under DPW and Engineering and then under Cleaning and Televising Sewers. The map, I'm sorry, I don't have the actual updated section, so that is the location where you can find them. I just want to bring to council's attention, a little over three years ago, the city administration was in a bit of a crisis with a treasure, without a treasurer at the time. Thankfully, the administration and council were able to work with then-DBW water clerk Lisa Rosati to fill the crucial role of city treasurer. I'm happy to say that as of last week, Lisa Rosati completed the three-year process of becoming a certified public treasurer within the state of Michigan. Congratulations to her and her continued appreciation. And last, I'd like to thank council and staff for their work on this year's budget.
Thank you. Could you also give a little update about the, I want to call it the outdoor fair, but you know, when I'm talking about the DDA activity, combined city DDA activity coming up on the?
That is, the 17th, yes. It's the, I believe it's the open air fair on the 17th.
Fair, thanks.
And coupled with the farmer's market, which will be located just south of the Clausen, the former Clausen Grill in the city market there, I mean, in the city parking lot there.
And we've also agreed to allow the, are the farm, will the farmers be back at Shom? Or not Shom, at the park again? They put a?
There's one.
Yeah, the same, but the, the Luminaire Farms will re, they will go back to their normal post at the park.
Correct.
Right? So for people who are looking for produce and stuff, they'll be back at their normal stand. So I just want to make sure they got a plug for that, because we want people to show up for that as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Right? Thanks. Any questions for our city manager? Okay, great. Then let's have council comments. Councilmember Binkowski?
Just one quick comment. I just wanted to correct a person who came up during public comment. The council was not unanimous on, on putting, putting the charter amendment on the ballot. I voted against it every single way, time. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Moffett?
Just want to thank everyone for their engagement and for coming out. It is a very exciting time to have so many citizens participating in what's going on and speaking their mind. I think it's very exciting, and I appreciate everyone for coming out on their Wednesday evening and paying attention to everything. It's just really awesome and exciting. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Anderson?
I have no comment.
Councilmember Shepherd?
No comments.
That sounded so ominous, the no comment thing. I also would like to thank, again, our city staff, Michelle and Vince for running a good election, for all the residents who came out to vote, and for the good and peaceful people out there who just got to voice their opinions. And I'm hoping that some of this noise that was out there that divided a lot of people over this election will kind of dissipate, and people will just remember we're all neighbors and should probably just do our best to get along the best we can moving forward, and because we have far more similarities than not similarities, and we all want what's best for this community. I think it's important to remember that even if we don't all agree upon the same thing, we're all coming from a place, I think, of wanting something that's good for our community. And also, just one other point. Someone had pointed, I don't even remember who it was. Someone pointed out that Mr. Riker often interrupts, but I will say, and doesn't follow rules. Mr. Riker is, to a fault, will wait for me to acknowledge him, whether it's a nod or something, before he speaks. So I don't want you to get taken down for something that you actually didn't do, just for fun.